Good evening and welcome to the March 19th, 2024 City of Angels City Council meeting. Rural Publicity Row.
Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Brolio.
Present.
Councilmember Shemente.
Present.
Councilmember Charato.
Present.
Staff is present.
Thank you. We'll do led to leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our report out of closed session and direction was given to staff on item. Takes us to item four, looking for approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Does anybody have?
I am making an amendment. Under correspondence, I am adding the letter of support for Calaveras County to apply for funding to build a rural public health department.
Okay, thank you. Any other amendments to the agenda? Any public comment on the agenda as it's being amended? Anybody online?
We have Nate and another person.
So bring it back. I'm looking for approval of the agenda as amended.
Some of you.
One second. We have a motion and a second. Rose, Rollfelpie.
Shemente.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Charato.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda. That is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Do we have any public comment with us tonight? This would be your opportunity to either raise your hand if you're online or join us at the podium with public comment. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Item six is our consent agenda. We have three items on consent. Any members of council wishing to pull any of those items?
I need to pull item A of state, Rose.
Okay, I'm glad you pulled A because I have a change on it.
Okay, and I would like to pull item B. I have a couple of little light questions that I didn't get asked.
Sure.
It's gonna be fast. So we're gonna move forward with public or?
Public motions for C.
For C, yeah.
Second.
Okay.
Shemente.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Charato.
Aye.
Okay, then we're gonna go back to item A. We have an abstain from Moncada. And then Charato, you have a recommendation for change?
Yep, on item number four.
Uh huh.
It says seconded by council member and it's Brolio, is what it's called.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comment on item A? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion as amended.
Some of you.
Second. Okay.
Shemente.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Abstain. Herndon.
Aye.
Charato. Thank you.
Okay, item B is our council table check and treasury. So there was just a couple of checks I had questions on. And I don't know, Michelle, do you want to? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'll be easy on you. Hi.
Hi.
So there's a couple of checks that we've made payable to Rourke whoever for P Ever. I'm just wondering, it says professional services for either 23 or 24. Are those specific to any one project? Or are they just survey work that he does for us for?
It's actually gonna be Amy, sorry.
It's actually reviewing maps and signing maps for boundary line adjustments. He also has done legal descriptions for us for boundary lanes so that we can record those. So it's basically stuff like that.
So it's general professional services like it's listed?
Yes.
If it were specific to an application or a project or anything, it would be listed in there?
Not necessarily. He breaks his bills down that way. He tells us which specific project he's working on.
But we wouldn't see that?
No, but his bill, he should, you need to know. He does sign those.
There was something else on here. I can't find it right now, but I know that there were a couple of boot allowances that were paid out, but it didn't seem like we were paying out the same amount to staff and/or all of our staff.
Boot allowance should be $2.50 for each water wastewater or miscellaneous.
So there's what is it?
Two employees.
Yeah.
Now, this is sewer O and M and Public Works were the two that I saw. They were different amounts and I was like, well, somebody get cheap boots. And then I was just wondering, where's everybody else? Where's the rest of stuff? Is that paid out at a different time?
Yeah, it's based on reimbursement.
Yeah.
Based on reimbursement?
Yeah.
So they acquired their boots and then they turned in receipts?
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense. I was thinking it would have been the same time of year.
Oh, no.
Okay, those were my two questions.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions I were talking about? Thanks, Michelle. Seeing none, we'll go for public comment on item B. And if there's no public comment, bring me it back for a motion. And I will make the motion for pass it. One second. Rose?
Shemente.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Charato.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Takes us to our regular agenda. Item 7A is our Utica Park update. Amy.
Mayor, council members, we met this morning with lawyer. We have some very, very, very preliminary layouts. And as soon as those get refined to make sure that all the mandatory elements are in there, we will go to the committee and come to the city council and present those for input. We have a meeting tomorrow here with the committee to go over park course and interpretive signs. And the geo-technical report remains on schedule to be delivered by Tuesday. They finished all their lab work. They still have not indicated any changes to their initial findings. You happy to answer any questions?
On Tuesday or Thursday?
The meeting?
No, the geo-technical.
This Friday.
This Friday.
Okay.
So it looks like construction's potentially gonna be deferred until after the end of March now, right? So we're?
Correct. If we had to bet, I would say the beginning of May. However, their tentative schedule still has the same delivery date.
About Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, public comment, please. Anybody have any public comment on Utica Park? Seeing none, I think it's B. Taking us to item A, uh, B. Overview of the planning to building workflow.
Mayor, council members, feel free to just jump in with questions while we're going through this. And go ahead, next slide. And go ahead, next slide. So basically, I hope I don't bore you to death on this, but I'm gonna try to give you an idea of what planning does, when they do it versus what building does when they do it and how our administrative support specialist, whose acronym we won't repeat here, but you can figure that out for yourself, helps coordinate all of it. Basically, long before any building permit is pulled, people will come to the front counter and planning is usually the second person they need. We go over things like can I, how do I? If the question is can I, how do I, and it deals with development, then they come to the planner, who then basically directs them to where something could go, what process they have to go through, what zoning, what permits they need, which public hearings they might need. And basically, that can be a process that takes days. It can be a process that takes weeks. And it can be a process that takes years. So especially for the larger projects, I'm basically the person, planning's the person they get to know the best at the city until it's time to, next slide, issue the conditions of project approval, which, one of the first of which is prior to issuance of a building permit. So long before they ever see the building department, they've gone through reviews from the building department, from the engineering department, from the fire marshal, from Public Works. Because basically, that's what planning does is we gather input from everybody. We gather input from adjoining property owners. We try to mediate all the input. We try to make sure that all the input jives. We try to let them go into a process with their eyes open, knowing what to expect when they get to a building permit. And that works well for large projects.
Large projects.
However, very small projects where you've never gone through any of that before and the very first thing you do is drop them with a building permit, there is a little bit of that process that you still have to go through. And that's where, next slide. And go ahead and go to the next slide. That's where the administrative services specialist starts carrying any heavier load, if you will. Basically, she takes this application that sometimes comes in online. Has, they've never talked to anybody before. And if it's pretty straightforward and simple, she can actually issue some of the permits herself and make sure that they're okay to issue. Water heaters, generators sometimes, minor re roofs, things like that. Otherwise, our building inspector will look at them if they are things like electrical plumbing. And then our fire marshal will look at them if they're fire sprinklers, fire alarm systems. Planning doesn't look at hardly any building permits unless they are for a house or a structure. Because all we do is check setbacks on building permits. It's basically all we do. Unless it was a large project that we had worked on before with somebody, we make sure that building permit conforms with all those millions of conditions that we have put on them. So to go through some of the stuff, I'm gonna make it back up. Sorry about that. Back and back and back. So that's the basic overview of how we're in different areas, if you will. Of course, we're in such a small setting that frankly, y'all yell across and through the wall frequently. That's how we coordinate. I'm in the office on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Our building inspector is in the office on Wednesdays and Fridays. And our administrative services specialist is there Monday through Friday. But she can always get ahold of planning. She can always get ahold of a building at any time she might need to. The things that planning does specifically deal with zoning, conditional use permits, planning commission. The administrative services specialist is charged with putting together the agendas, getting them out to the planning commissioners, making sure the planning commissioners have filed their 700s, that they have done their training for the year, that they know they have received their packets, that they are doing their cybersecurity training, what have you. So that's, she does all that in addition to some of the other things she says, she does. You had mentioned Rourke whoever. Planning and survey, we work fairly closely together on easements. People call all the time wanting to know, is that easement still active? How can I get it abandoned? And sometimes that takes some research by the city surveyor. Subdivision maps, parcel maps, boundary line adjustments, mergers. And then if it's a big enough project, we prepare anywhere from a two-page environmental study to a 150-page environmental study. So hopefully, we have as many two-page ones as humanly possible. Those are our exemptions. And very few of the 150-page ones, which we did do for Tractor Supply, which take a much longer period of time. Short and long range planning, planning does, we do general plan, housing element, code updates. We do sign permits in the historic district, special projects. But one of the most important things we do is pre-project reviews. Projects always goes smoother if someone walks in the door and asks us before they ever start the process, what can I expect? What all am I gonna have to do? How long is this going to take? And then we can exchange ideas with them, give them ideas about how they might be able to get through the process faster. Things that they may want to consider doing in the future versus what they may want to do now. And so if you ever have somebody who's interested in doing something development-wise in the city, we strongly, strongly urge you to send them our way. We love doing that with people. We had an architect walk in the door last Thursday on Oakman, sat down and said, hey, I've got this client. I just got in from Oakland. I'm sorry to just show up, but we wanna do an addition to their house. Administrative Services Specialist and I sat down with him. I checked for setbacks and I said, by the way, your house is over 100 years old. Did you know you qualify to be on our register? Did you know you qualified to be on, perhaps have a Millsat contract? We pulled out sandmore maps. We were able to show him how old his house was. The guy could not believe that he was able to walk in and get that kind of feedback that quickly. And we love doing that and highly encourage that, as quickly as ever humanly possible. So basically, to none of you go back, forward, even forward, forward. Right here, yes. So that's basically what I do. I also work with the Administrative Services Specialist, who tends to take the lead on things like encroachment permits. We have to do permits every time we hang banners. We have to do it whenever we have a changeable message sign. We have to do it whenever somebody AT&amp;T, Comcast, you name it, wants to work within the right of way. We have to coordinate with Caltrans. That takes an enormous amount of time. We have annual permits. But every time we wanna do something with one of those annual permits, our Administrative Services Specialist has to go through a week-long process with Caltrans to make sure that it is approved. Business licenses are huge. They're really a great tool for us, by the way. And we can catch people early and tell them, hey, come in, let's meet. Let's talk about what you wanna do so that we can tell them all those things they're gonna need to do and they don't find out sort of how, because they've made big investments in a project. Administrative Services Specialist handles all those. Make sure everybody on staff looks at them. Fire marshal, building official, planner, if necessary, sales stands, support to the code enforcement officer. Already mentioned the planning mission. Special committees like the Utica Park Committee, she handles the agendas for that. Intake for all the planning permits. Those are also handled by the Administrative Services Specialist. Yes. So just like the planner, make sure everybody gets notified of new planning projects. Whenever the building permit comes in, the Administrative Services Specialist works with the applicant to make sure that the building department sees it, that the fire marshal sees it, that the engineer sees it, if necessary. And you have to know who does or does not need to see it. She then, yes. And yes. Have to know which ones she can process in-house versus those she has to send out to CSG. It used to be that everything basically went out to CSG. Now, the primary things that go out almost exclusively are brand-new buildings from scratch, which we don't have a huge number of. It's new houses, extensive remodels, and all commercial projects. That's in comparison to several years ago when Steve was here. He would do single-family residential in-house. But commercial always has to go out, always. So that's basically one of the main differences you see now. Especially on new single-family residenials. If it's super complex, structural, building things like, frankly, on the Utica Hotel, we've had some engineering issues. Sometimes that hasn't gone to CSG. Sometimes that had to go to our city engineer. Most electrical, plumbing, and mechanical stays here. It's only when it's like a whole old building, again, like a Utica Hotel kind of thing where they're completely redoing everything, that it would go to CSG. And complex solar systems, honestly, I've not run into a lot of those. If we have a huge freestanding one, we have it. Those will go out. But in general, most stuff, except for those large projects, stay in-house. That isn't to say that we haven't had some curveballs. We've been sort of grappling with education on the California Historic Building Code, which happens in the Old Town District a lot. And sometimes we will have to get ahold of CSG and go, well, wait a minute. Try that again, California Historic Building Code. And we have to actually get online with them and do some discussions back and forth.
Are they YouTube that, to the historic?
Generally, every large company will have a staff member who has special training. And so often, they will need to go, wait a second, let's go get George or Brad or whoever it is to come in and check that. Usually, it is the chief building official who will make a final call on that, regardless of who's the specials, because only they are allowed to do that. We might think we can come up with some great ideas, but only the chief building official has the credentials and the authority to actually sign off on stuff. So stuff in the historic district, we're having more and more of them wanna use the California Historic Building Code. We've been pushing it. So CSG has been doing a lot more in terms of, oh, let's double-check state historic building code to see if there's not an alternative way to do it. Doesn't mean they don't do something. It means if you can do something similar and get a similar result without structurally changing the integrity of a historic building, then that code will allow you to do that. So we do that a lot. And I'll go ahead and wrap up. Yes. We have iWorks to basically apply for things. I would say 95% of all of our applications now come in on iWorks. I'm amazed at how quickly everybody has jumped on submitting online versus walking in. This also means that we now get a set of electronic plans. We use, your party will come in with three separate sets of plans. Very expensive to produce. And then we'll make one little change and they're always thrilled to know that they have to go and reprint those. They don't have to do that anymore. We can actually write directly on the plans electronically, which is really cool. And again, the Administrative Service Specialist, she's the clearinghouse. She is what everything goes through. Now, obviously, if Rebecca hears somebody yelling at the front counter who's gotten a little frustrated because they've gotten their third review back from CSG, she'll come out there and try to mediate. Caitlin, you know, you'll, you'll, Administrative Services Specialist will hear, you know, this is the third review. And then she knows it's time to timeout. We should not be going through a third review. We need to bring everybody in, sit down, talk about it, and make sure this review is the last review. Because there's no reason to go through a review more than twice. If you are, it means there's a communication problem. And so we work pretty hard to try to call people in, make sure that that gets fixed. And yes. We only have one Administrative Services Specialist. We tried to split her into many different people because she helps with planning. She helps with code enforcement. She helps with building. She does support for other staff. So we stretch her in whichever way we possibly can. And next slide. And as you know, you do contract services for CSG. Both for a building official, building inspector, plan reviewers. You contract with Augustine Planning Associates for planning. I'm me, but I also have some associates I work with who do things like wetlands permitting and cultural resources and stuff like that. City contracts with Dewberry for civil engineering services and contracts with Rourke whoever for our city service. And lastly, again, coordination. There is no coordination without our Administrative Services Specialist. That is her role. She makes sure that I know what's going on with buildings, projects that might have been something I viewed. Make sure they're still going consistently with all the conditions we put on it. She interacts with the fire marshal. She's the one that knows what's going on with everybody. And I know when I've been gone, been gone a day or two, I would usually sit down with her for a few minutes and just like, okay, what, what heck has occurred while we've been gone? And last slide. Our goal is always to make sure it goes smoothly. When it doesn't, we do pull people in. We don't always know if somebody thinks it's going smoothly or not. Sometimes we hear about it on the street. If you ever hear somebody who's upset about the way a project is going, it is easy to get ahold of it. It is easy for us to talk to them. And believe it or not, it's usually easy to resolve the problem. And we actually get a big kick out of being able to resolve things fairly quickly and easily so that people can come into a meeting upset. But I'd say 100 times out of 100, usually leave as upset as when they came and they usually have a plan for going forward to make things work. If not, just keep doing it again and again until we get. Be happy to answer any questions. Will we get a copy of this?
We can.
Awesome, thank you.
So I did two remodels under the old system. We have in-house inspectors. And I thought they would, well, you know, the opposite plan ends by an engineering thing. Had a newer stamp and, and we did all that. And it went fairly smoothly. You know, there were suggestions made after the architect, you know, his plans or, I mean, there were changes. But I felt it went smoothly and there weren't any time lags. This, there appears to be lags. Do we, we tell folks upfront that, you know, the inspector's here two days a week. You know, I'm here two days a week. And so when I submit a set of plans, either online or in person, you know, please understand there's gonna be a week or so before we get back to you. How is that handled, you mean?
So we, we try to make them aware. Most of our customers are repeat customers, so they know. We also let them know eight out of 10 of them have the direct phone number for our building inspector. We let most of them know. And CSG is very good at getting back within their required timeline. They have X number of days, five, 10, I can never remember the exact day. It depends on the complexity of the project to get their comments back. I think sometimes the problem, and this is something we've been trying to work on, is that they will give us two pages of comments where a half a page might do. And so we've been working with them to, based upon meetings that we've had with contractors and architects. No, we don't need the entire code repeated on your plans. That type of thing. So there are, there is room for improvement. We've been trying to implement that. But in general, CSG is good at getting comments back. The problem comes with when you go through a second round or a third round. And sometimes that's because there's a misunderstanding about what's been written in the comments, but nobody will come and ask. And we don't know that there's still a question. Sometimes there's an opposition to what the comment says, but we don't know that because we don't have told that. And then we'll get the plans back and they'll be virtually identical to the ones that they had previously submitted. And so that's a lack of communication. And so that's, we're trying to make sure that that doesn't happen as much as humanly possible. I don't think somebody is intentionally trying to do that, but sometimes it happens. The more expertise that has been used to prepare the plans initially, generally, the less comments there are. We will sometimes get back at the envelope by unsubmitted. And we will try to work with those. We will sometimes get back at the envelope by unsubmitted. And we will try to work with those. But I can guarantee they'll come back with a lot of comments. Whereas if you get something done by a professional architect.
But you're talking about plans and the back and forth. That's a building.
That's a building.
So you're planning, you're only involved with setbacks and zoning. Early on with zoning and things like that. And then if it's at a building permits.
Yes.
Augustine planning is not involved.
Yeah.
The way you were just talking made it sound like you were very involved in that part of the case.
Basically, what happens is if it was a project that I had previously worked on. And the applicant knows me because I've worked with them for two years, they will sometimes come to me. And I'll basically have to, hey, let's get you the building and. Try, only because they got to know me because I was the first person they had and got them through the process. But no, once I'm done, and that's true of every county or city I've ever worked with. Once you're done with the plan again, you almost never see it again until the grand opening or ribbon cutting day.
Right.
So.
And then Rebecca, you suggested in your narrative or Amy suggested that we may be looking at a different model once we did an uptick in building and.
Yeah. I mean, right now, we just can't, we can't just buy the cost of bringing a full-time, you know, full-time anyone. Hasn't been the one full-time position that we have in here. But we're seeing a lot more development, but we have to see a trend, right? So we've got applications out there, but if they really gonna come through to fruition, we've got Eureka Oaks, which is the Habitat Humanity Project. But they're, they'll, I think they're gonna come at the next meeting and give an update. But they're, they're waiting till spring in order to start doing the dirt down infrastructure. So we've got a ways to go before we would need that additional, you know, inspection activity. And so for right now, we're, we're watching it and paying attention to when we may need to pull that trigger again. To look at an in-house inspector. But again. It's, it's still gonna be a hybrid because you can have an in-house inspector, but you're still gonna need some, some building official. You, you don't necessarily have a full-time building official, but you're gonna need someone that has that level of expertise and certification and background. We are talking with CSG. So if we had a need for an extra day, you know, like we know for the next month. Which there's too much for two days a week, they'll work with us for us to get, you know, an extra day or an extra two days. But right now, we've got, we've got weeks where we don't have anything scheduled on Friday. So he'll be on Wednesday, and then we're not gonna pay him to come and sit in our office on a Friday when there's no inspection schedule. So we still are not seeing a completely, you know, filled calendar even on those two days. But we'll, we'll continue to watch it. But we are definitely seeing increases for sure. It's just, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying, let's put a job description together and start recruiting for that. Because I don't know that we would be able to, to fund it. And that's primarily the reason why we don't have an in-house engineer anymore. We don't have in-house building inspection anymore. We don't have a planning director anymore because that development was done. So there was no financial mechanism to pay for that staffing anymore. And the last piece was the engineering, was it engineering technician? That was the last piece of that, and then they, they left. So we're, we've got the one administrative services specialist.
So, so when someone comes in. When you do a project, you, and you have, you have a mindset of, you know, I'm gonna have this frame, I'm gonna have this sheeted. And like, then you line up the electrician and the sheet rocker and a roofrocker, and you just kind of go down the road. But you have to have a mindset of making sure you call ahead so that the inspector can come so he, or she, I'm assuming it's a he. Doesn't put you behind the eight ball.
Right.
And your sheet rocker goes off to another job because you haven't had your inspection.
Yeah.
And that would have.
We're, we're very forthcoming in the conversation with applicants. So they know it's on our website, it's on the application, it's in conversation. We do not have a full-time building inspector. They're here on Wednesdays and Fridays. And so everyone knows that they need to schedule ahead of time.
So if he can't get through his Wednesday schedule, then is there some way for that person to come back up on Thursday and get caught up? Or is it just pushed? I mean, I, I don't know how that, I mean, so you could get behind the eight ball in some cases.
Well, and not just inspection, but what about plan checking? Is that going on on days that that event's not?
That's, that's.
Plan checks are going on even though it's not at Wednesday or Friday?
Right.
They're going on at, at CSG office?
Yep.
Okay. So there's progress being made.
Yeah. No matter, no matter what, they're available. But on, I haven't seen a part where he has not been able to get to all of his, all of his inspections in a day.
And the public kind of has a habit of knowing that inspections are gonna be on it.
Yeah. So you have to really plan.
But I'm having very, very constant conversations with CSG right now to say, it's coming. So you need to be, you need to start thinking on your side how you're gonna prepare because we're gonna need more days. And I don't know when that's gonna happen, but you need to prepare on your end because it's gonna happen. Because we've got the Habitat project happening, we're doing the Max project right now. And then just add all the other activity that's going on in the city. We're not gonna be able to handle all the inspections that would have to happen with two days a week. So CSG is already preparing. And I'm still, I'm, I'm really hesitant. Like, what is the Habitat for Humanity project? Like, that's it. I'm still really hesitant on saying, yeah, let's go hire a full-time inspector for the next, you know, year and then have to. So we need to get some more things in the pipeline before we can commit to a longer range planning effort for that.
And even stepping back in time, like, I'll tell you, Steve Flag or whatever, but he may not get to you for a day or two because they were that type of busy. Or like, or like, Mr. White was at, you know, he was over at the county at that time. He may not get to you for three or four days. You know what I mean? It wasn't like you were getting next day's service, I'll use the boon of the while, you know, a few years back. You, you weren't always getting next day's service too. So you had to plan accordingly as.
You, I, I, no, I, I, I get, and then. Who settles the interpretation questions if there's an interpretation issue?
I think.
About building code?
Yeah.
The chief building official.
Who's?
CSG.
Who is CSG?
Yeah.
And so they have final say.
They have final say.
So I think that's my question is, is that improving? Because I know we've touched on some staffing change at CSG with the plan checking and, and, and inspector. I'm, I'm continuously hearing of like, just third readings and back and forth and interpretation frustrations from the public. And I'm wondering if there's, if there's been some improvement there or some room for improvement with.
And I guess that's where I'm a little confused because we're not hearing that. And so anyone.
And I'm gonna be hearing something that happened two weeks ago and you resolved it.
Right.
Monday, and I'm.
Right.
It's sale news or something, but I'm.
So the, we have a totally different plan reviewer. We have a totally different building inspector. Our building official is still the building official. But what we're doing is when there is a disagreement, and this really comes down to the fact that the applicant just doesn't understand. Why they need to follow this code. Period. And they shouldn't have to. And the county, the county wouldn't make us do this. Well, I've called the county multiple times and the county says, oh, yes, we would. So short of bringing the county building official to our meeting to prove that he would do exactly what our building official is requiring. We're staying with what the building official is saying because that's, that's covering us, right? And then we're just trying to better educate the applicant in terms of why they have to adhere to this. And really, it comes down to mitigating their own liability. And it really comes down to if you, if, if our building official who really signs off, right, on the project, on that, on the, when they're doing the inspections. If they signed off on something that didn't adhere to state code. And something were to happen, we all get named in the suit. The building owner, the building, the business owner, the city, and CSG, and anyone else that had their fingers on it. As long as we can prove that we, we did exactly what we were supposed to do, we're done. It's now on the building owner and the business owner in front of who's gonna be hauled in that, in that lawsuit. And so we look at it from a liability perspective, but we're still trying to kind of find that way to find some compromise. So we're, we're working with the building inspector, who's then working with the building official, to come up with some creative ways. That we can get from point A to point B, thinking a little out of the box, but that we could all still hang our hat on it. And so that just takes time and it takes education. But we're still not gonna be able to say, okay, yeah, sure, do whatever.
But you guys, you guys get a heads up? I mean, if it's through the second review, I mean, do they, do our consultants say? You know, send an email going, hey, you know, I'm working with Mike Chiumini and, you know, he's kind of being a little jerky here about what he wants and.
Yeah. So our administrative services specialist, she will see it.
She knows it.
Everything that's passing through is passing in front of her face. It's all going through our system, so she can see it. So she'll know. Amy sees it. I have access to the same, you know, email account. So we're all seeing it.
Okay.
So if it's, if, if that's what's happening, then Caitlin's reaching out to try to figure out. What is, what is happening?
Okay.
And sometimes it's the issue where the, the plan reviewer wasn't aware that it was a historic building. And so we have to say, it was, it's a historic building. Sometimes it's a matter of the applicant is like, well, I just don't agree. I just don't agree. So I'm gonna continue to submit this the way that I want to submit it. I just don't agree. And that's not a solution either. So that's where, that's when we kind of have to pull everybody in and say, we can agree to disagree, but at the end of the day. We can't sign up on this, you know, this permit until this gets resolved.
Thank you, Snipole.
Quick question, Amy. If a property, if, if somebody's interested in using a property for a specific use. I was gonna say an antique store. And it had been an antique store previously, but not most recent. Does that have to go through, does, does something like that have to go through an administrative use permit? If it's not the exact same use that it just was.
Sometimes, yes, sometimes no. Because often, especially when it's a long use, it's been there a long time. It would usually legal and non-conforming. Rarely is it an antique store. It's, it's usually a change to something like a salon.
Restaurant.
Something that would generate odors or noise.
So if it was a, if it was a hair salon, and it was a hair salon long ago, but most recently was an antique store, then it needs to go back to the previous.
Because it probably never got the conditional use permit. And our code basically gives you a six-month. You know, if you abandon a use, it's six months of inspection.
And my only other question, Mike touched on it with letting the public know that we have inspections available on these days and things like that. Are there other ways that we can streamline and try to educate them? I know a lot of it is case by case, based on the zoning and the setbacks and the size and the building, the historic and all that. But are there ways, without making people dive into our ordinances that are deep and dark, you know. But is there ways to have handouts or something where you could say, okay, if I'm interested in doing this, then I'm gonna need this, 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 and this. Without twelve different efforts and, and people get frustrated. And I think that's what, when we hear.
So, so those are things that we're working on internally. And so, yeah. So one of the things that has caused frustration most recently is. Like, are you aware that every time a change in tenant occurs, regardless of use? So it could be the same type of business. So it could be a clothing store to a clothing store or whatever, right? Every time there's a change in use at a commercial property. That you have to get a new business license. And in order to get that business license, you need to get a new certificate of occupancy. That is the same requirement if you look at any city, any county, anywhere.
Because of the change of name? Just for the simple ownership change?
Change of tenant.
Tenant, uh-huh.
Because it is like, I almost make it the equivalent of you've lived in your house for thirty years and then you're gonna replace your roof. Right? You pull a permit to replace your roof, what do you have to do? Now you have to put.
Carbon monoxide.
Carbon monoxide would, you know, what your smoke will are. You have to make sure your water heater is wrapped. It, it basically gives the local agency the ability to, to find conformance. Updated conformance to updated code. So you could have had a, a clothing store or a whatever, pick, pick a business in that property. And it had been there for thirty years, right? And now they've moved out, and now a new business moves in. That still is a similar type of business.
They're thinking it's good.
They're thinking it's moving, move out. Well, no, because now, now you have to conform for safety, for health and safety to updated code.
Yeah.
That's a real tough one for people to understand. And so, so we're working with our administrative services and our fire marshal. And our building inspector and our building official in planning to develop a, just kind of a really simple.
Perfect.
You wanna, you want a business license, you have to have a certificate of occupancy. And there are all the things that have to happen with that. So we're trying to identify all those different types of nuances. Because it may not be an administrative use permit or a conditional use permit. It's literally just a certificate of occupancy. Which seems really benign and not, not a big deal. And it can become a big deal. So, so again, that's where we're coming up with some creative but fully legal. Ways to, to bridge those gaps. So it's not as excruciating.
Something else that's been invaluable, since Rebecca talked to the real estate agents, I've been getting a lot more calls from real estate agents. Before they list the property saying what uses are allowed and not allowed on the property. Thank you, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
That is huge because once the person's signed on the dotted line and it's already closed escrow. Now you've got a problem. And it, it becomes a very upsetting experience for everybody. So, you know, education, education. And sometimes the handouts are good, but sometimes face to face. You can make them not sound quite as intimidating.
Yeah.
It's six pages, but guess what? Really all you have to do.
Other questions or comments? Public comment on this matter? Is anybody online?
Name.
Name? Name's got nothing to say? Okay. No public comment. I'll bring it back. And thank you for that. That was a very good overview. Yeah, if you can provide that.
Yeah, I'll email it.
I, I find value in that as well. So thank you. Takes us to item C. This is to approve resolution twenty-four dash twenty-four to designate the city planner as a subordinate officer. To make determinations of public convenience or necessity regarding alcohol and beverage control license applications. Where undue concentration exists.
Mayor and council members, this is something we've been doing since 2019. There was a prior resolution. Evidently, the ABC wants a new one. So here we are again. What happened was, once upon a time, we would have to, every time somebody wanted to serve beer or wine at their restaurant. They would have to apply for an ABC license. We would have to go through a public hearing at the planning commission. And then they would get their ABC license. It would often delay them being able to open. So what we did was we changed it to an administrative permit. So that we can take less than two weeks to issue those same permits instead of four to six weeks. This finding of undue concentration. If Murphy's had to worry about undue concentration, we'd be in trouble. I mean, you know, when you have restaurants, when you're a tourist-based town, you're gonna need to have more than one every three hundred feet or one every fifty feet. So this is actually fairly, a fairly routine finding. Honestly, if something came up where somebody wanted to do something out of the ordinary, we, we would take that to the planning commission. But so far, this has been working.
This is, this is our current practice?
This is our current practice.
And we're just, okay.
Updating.
Freshening.
Well, this freshening of the resolution.
Because ABC wants something.
They sent us a notice.
Okay. Why should I notice on the notice? It didn't, it didn't?
I know.
Okay.
They lost it. I don't know how they've been doing this for a while.
And it's status quo, it's the exact same as before. There's no changes to it.
No changes.
And this is all ABC. This is beer and wine and this is special events type ABC.
Yes.
It doesn't change your workload, doesn't give you additional tasks because you've been doing it.
Without this, I'd have to go back to planning commission all the time. So it increases.
Okay.
Two weeks.
Other questions? Public comment? Seeing none, I'd like to bring it back for a consideration of a motion.
I make some move.
No motion?
I'll say.
And the second?
Schumante?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, this is to approve resolution 24 dash 25, authorizing the city administrator to apply for the call for unhistoric revitalization subgrant program and provide staff direction for additional downtown historic preservation, promotion and recognition programs supporting heritage tourism and economic development. Aye.
Do in one hour and 59 minutes. I will chart.
Oh.
Um, wow. Mayor and council members, this is the fun one on the agenda. Basically, what this would allow us to do is supply for $750,000 to use to help people who maybe have vacant property that they're not using, that are national register eligible. We have 30 of those properties in our historic district that would be eligible. We would be able to help them to pay for doing any rehab they need in order to get it open. Um, maybe somebody is already a well-established commercial endeavor and their building is deteriorating, so we need to give them some assistance in order to keep operating their building. We've even included in the application so far, things like, hey, we sometimes cannot have all the hours we want to be open because we don't have the proper H back. Um, and maybe, you know, these are old buildings, so this is another alternative. So, um, this would be competitive. Um, the outline that we have prepared in the grant so far is basically top priority is to get vacant buildings back into active commercial and then secondarily to keep those commercial endeavors that we have going, going. Um, but again, what has the most economic development benefit to the city? This is a active economic development grant based upon historic preservation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Question?
No, no, I I just, I appreciate the work that staff is doing to help promote ways, creative ways. We did it last meeting and we're doing it now to help incentivize folks to not only maintain, but also uh, not only preserve, maintain, but also maybe bringing them back to life. So I I appreciate that. Thank you.
I only have one question. If, um, we get this, is there a little bit of outreach? Is it going to go through downtown or through ACTA or somebody like that?
We have, um, in the grant, we state that we will meet with every single owner that is eligible. And there's no match.
Oh.
However, we have, we have asked for, um, if you could see your way to it, to have $10,000 set aside
Right.
to have, um, an architectural historian prepare a national register nomination for the entire district. Um, what that would do is it would continue to keep opening up funding sources for that. This is something that occurred in 2011 and there was a recommendation at that time. To get the district on the national register. It does help with bringing birth to town. Um, we suggested a few other things in there too, to get your feedback on that I'd like to just focus on the the grant tonight. Um, if unfortunately, it is a federal grant. They're only giving 15 nationwide. We do have one leg up in that, um, we are famous from our twang. That is a national and international
Oh, good.
book, if you will, and so we play that up.
Do we have any public comment?
Can we write these?
Seeing none? Um, yeah, this is really exciting for me too, and I I think these types of things are wonderful. I appreciate, I applaud you guys for finding them and keeping your eyes out and um, go on form aggressively like this. So, um, having said that, if anyone has any final questions or comments, I'll make a motion.
I'll take it. Schumante?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye.
Sharada?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, this is discussion and direction on graffiti response in the city.
Okay, so this was a a kind of discussed at the last meeting of wanting to see something at a future meeting. So we, uh, you know, we've been kind of struggling with graffiti. I would say this is kind of a regular occurrence in the city. Um, and, you know, when we see it, we try to clean it up as quickly as we can. Inevitably, you know, we'll have like a waterline break or a sewer main break and then our whole staff get distracted doing something else, but um, we do try to clean it up, you know, as quickly as we can. Uh, you know, unfortunately, this nice lovely spring weather uh, seems to show an uptick, um, in these types of activities, whether it's graffiti or, um, vandalism, uh, that, um, we do definitely see an uptick when the weather starts getting nicer, which is unfortunate. Uh, we do have several sections within our code that address graffiti. So, um, I listed all of those in the staff report, but graffiti is considered a public nuisance. Um, we have it identified in a public nuisance on the end on our vacant buildings. Um, we talk about how we can do house recovery. Um, but again, we'd have to go through that whole administrative, you know, process in order to put it, you know, do a judgment and put it, put a, um, a lien on a property if we have to clean it up. Um, we did include uh, graffiti on, in our new vacant, uh, commercial buildings ordinance. Um, and put a timeline on there that said you need to remove all graffiti from private property within those vacant commercial properties within 48 hours, which is why we want to have a contact on our, uh, registry. Uh, we have enforcement responsibility, which identifies, um, the police chief. Um, and, you know, right now, our, our process is really, if we, if 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 we see it, uh, we'll add it to our, our work list. Um, if someone tells us about it, we'll add it to our work list. But a lot of times what we find is people are are not actually contacting the city. They'll complain on social media or they'll tell someone and we'll hear about it after it's made its way around. Um, and then we'll, we'll go and see it and find it. Um, last year, we had a pretty significant graffiti issue and vandalism issue, um, Greenhorn Creek and Gateway Park. And that was a combined effort of public works and fighter staff went out with Greenhorn Creek LLC members, as well as property owners out there and the Gulf Horse staff and went out and clean, you know, cleaned it all up as quickly as we could. But, um, so, so we really just are responding. We just react. When we see it, we react to it. So, um, you know, what we like to see is, you know, having a proactive approach and a, and a better, more, um, developed plan in terms of response. And, um, so we kind of put together what a potential, you know, policy or response plan would look like. Um, and it would be, you know, public outreach, you know, to try to develop, um, prevention programs and campaigns, rapid removal, community engagement, um, working with our police department, probation department and, you know, other agencies on looking at different restorative justice programs. There really aren't a lot of diversion programs out there anymore. And so, um, you know, if if we can get anyone to bite, um, that would be a question right now. Um, and I've asked, I I started asking a couple of years ago if probation was still doing any sort of um, of these programs and they're not. Uh, so a lot of it, I think, is going to really come down to trying to get ahead of it. Um, finding, uh, community, uh, members that can kind of get reached out to and quickly come and do a, do a cleanup day. Um, but we, we need to fund it. Um, there's other ideas that, um, agencies have done and they'll create like a, like a, like a graffiti wall. And so it's a place where, you know, kids can go and do legal graffiti. Um, so keep your graffiti off of all the bridges and signs and everything and keep your graffiti over here. Um, that is something that has worked, you know, in other areas and it kind of helps deter. But I also think, um, cameras deter. Um, and there is a cost to putting cameras up. Uh, there's the cost of buying the cameras originally. There's sell, uh, symbols that we have to put in them. There's licensing, uh, for the software. Um, and so, but the reality is we do have graffiti issues. Um, we have, uh, vandalism issues in the same places where we have graffiti issues and we have theft in the same areas where we have graffiti issues. Uh, so, you know, we would be looking for just a commitment from council to, um, budget supplies specifically for this effort. So painting supplies, outreach materials, um, diversion programs. Because if we were able to get, you know, whether it's the schools or probation or someone to do any of the diversion programs, they're not free. And so there would still be a cost associated with that and then cleanup day costs, um, you know, incentivizing the public to come is still also not the easiest thing to do, to spend the day doing that. Um, but you can kind of, uh, get them more in some ways by, you know, t-shirt or, um, you know, lunch. Um, but that is, that's a way of doing it. Um, this still kind of goes back to, I just, we don't have public work staff that can go and immediately go and clean up graffiti because last week, um, we had three different areas that we were going to go look at to clean up and we had two water lane breaks. So that is always going to take a priority and the graffiti is going to sit there and stay. Um, so that's kind of what, you know, our recommendation would be, um, and start working on pulling this kind of response plan together, kind of this community strategy together. Um, I also did find out this morning that, um, the Clean California funding is, um, there will be no funds, uh, as of June 40. So that will not be funded next fiscal year.
To clean up graffiti?
To, to, to clean up, like roadside cleaning, which could include.
All going to stay with graffiti.
So, um, yeah. So that's what we came up with.
So. Scott?
Um, sorry to make you walk.
Getting my steps in.
Yeah. Um, do you see a pattern to the graffiti? I mean, it used to be always kind of gang related. I, do you, is there?
Like everything else in the city, it that I've experienced over the last five and a half years is a cheap, has it ebbs and flows and it's a singular group of individuals. And then once at some point those individuals get arrested, whether it's here or somewhere else, then those crimes tend to mellow out. Until next time, we have another group of individuals doing it, whether, like I said, whether it's theft, whether it's vandalism, whether it's, you know, graffiti, which is, you know, inclusive of vandalism as well.
Sure.
Uh, so the, uh, some of you know, you know, Sonora had an arrest where they
Yeah.
we've made some, I'm waiting on their report. Um, which they're like us, they don't have a lot of record staff, so their person's been out of the office. So we're waiting for them to get us their report so that we can see it. We can identify any nexus between the, um, graffiti that was occurring over there and graffiti that's occurring over here. Um, but we're also talking about a misdemeanor crime that requires somebody to have witnessed the event and somebody to be willing to place this person under citizens arrest for the violation that they witnessed unless we as officers witness it occurring ourselves. So without those pieces, we don't really have a prosecutable, um, offense unless we can build a strong enough case somehow via video evidence or something like that showing that this specific individual did this specific piece of, you know, graffiti, like spray painted this. Yeah, so. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts to actually proving a case and then getting a conviction for it, you know, making an arrest, um, which we wouldn't make an arrest at this point because of what we call stale misdemeanor. We'd have to write a report, send it to the DA's office. The DA's office will review it, decide if they're going to prosecute. And if they do, then okay, they're prosecuting for a misdemeanor, which means they may get a small fine, probably no probation, probably no nothing else. Um, so, yeah, there, there's a lot of variables.
Are they similar in nature though? Is the graffiti?
Some of them, some of, I did get, I did, was able to get the chick, actually called the chief over there and had him send me some photos of what they had, um, their graffiti. And there is a nexus between what I saw on some of those photos and what I've seen over here. So there's a good chance that the, some of these individ, you know, they had, I think, four or five individuals that they arrested. So at least one of them is maybe involved in, but with one, you know, I I don't know. And that's why that's why we've asked for a copy of the report, so we can see the specifics of what their cases and how they even, um, came to the conclusion that these people were responsible or whatever.
You know, the other thing, uh, if I may suggest, you know, is have the resource officer at Bret Hart because, you know, we found often that we could catch those kids that were doing it or young adults because they put it all over the books or over the binders and stuff and and, you know, as you're walking.
They talked to other.
And they talk.
And our SRO is actually the one who first sent me the list of names and of the individuals that were arrested along with photographs and all that kind of stuff. And I will say that appears these are actually all adults.
Okay.
Like adult being 18 to 20 years old.
Right.
Probably, um, and a couple of them may or may not have been prior Bret Hart students.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, so, or, yeah. So anyways, there, there's some nexus there that makes me think that it's probably the same people. We still have to build a case in order for us to, to, you know, get it prosecuted. And we've got to have people coming out as victims, you know, reporting these things to us. Some of the stuff we've come across ourselves and and documented and contacted owners for, um, and didn't actually have like a reporting party or witness or anything like that. So those are the pieces that I've always, you know, always share with the public and try to make sure that the public's aware. If something is occurring or, you know, you've observed something, make sure you let us know. Cause if you're not letting us know, then we don't know about it and our hackles don't go up. Um, because we're not aware of what's going on, especially if we don't know that there's a trend like this graffiti thing currently is where we're we've seen more and more and more of it lately, but people don't, you know, yeah, we see it, but we're not witnessing the suspect and people aren't calling us to let us know about it.
Right, like the back of the theater keeps getting tagged, but then they paint it and then it gets tagged, but then they paint it. So, and they're not, I don't think anybody's recording it.
Well, that's like the same thing with CBS, behind CBS to trying to track down somebody that's going to report to us um, as well. And we're still waiting on, on a callback from their management.
What's the punishment if you were to catch?
It's a misdemeanor, so it's a non, uh, jellible offense. It's a nonviolent misdemeanor, so it means it'd get a citation at least initially. As far as the penalty, it would be probably, uh, yes, most likely going to be restitution of a fine, but not more than a thousand dollars. Um, and that, that would be the extreme, obviously. They're, they're probably going to base the fine on what the cost of the repairs would be, so.
They don't make them come out and paint and clean up graffiti and like participate in trying to clean up?
The only way to tie it in with the high school and get like, like significant detentions?
That's where, that's where the whole diversion.
Right.
I'm just, everyone comes in and so, um, that's where we've kind of we're kind of, I reached out to probation because they used to have a diversion program and they're not doing it anymore.
Um, it just seems to me like we could spend all sorts of money to try and like get cameras and catch them, but if it really isn't going to make that big of a difference.
Right.
I think once again, that type of stuff goes to deterrence
Right.
more than actual, um, convictions and making arrests and all that kind of stuff. Cause I was telling, uh, Rebecca earlier today, like Minesto. Cause I was telling Rebecca earlier today, like Modesto, they've got, here's my camera, here's, it's blinking blue and here's a picture, here's a badge and patch from Modesto Police Department, like telling you you're under surveillance at all times. And that, that's kind of would be my, my suggestion if we went that route. Because otherwise, if you just put cameras up, people aren't gonna know they're there, so it's not quite the deterrent today when, is when they know that there's a camera watching them.
Obviously you have your opinion on areas or locations throughout the city that would be ideal for camera usage for deterrence and, and or just securing footage, right? How many do you think would be on your wish list?
I would say initially maybe four to five.
Not just for, not just for graffiti, but for other, what are you thinking for?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, so I feel like we have kind of two different things to talk about. One is, is helping him do his jobs with turing and or capturing the, the events. But, how can we do, how can we do cleanup instead of putting it all on our public works department when they're already so short-staffed? But it's, and I agree with you, it's ebbing and flowing, it's just the time of year, but it seems like a lot of signs. Question for you Rebecca. If it's on signs, that's in right of way, it's on private property, that's not us to clean up, that's private property. So is it just a matter of notifying and notifying and then figuring out who's, who's on first and who's on third to go clean it up?
Yeah, it would just be a matter of, you know, it's, it's similar to what we do code complaints anyway. So we get a complaint and then we would send a courtesy notice to the property owner on file, on record. And then, you know, that courtesy notice would say, you know, per code section, one seventeen, one hundred public since graffiti. And then you need, you need to clean it up. And then, you know, you know, we'd give out a time, you know, please have it, you know, cleaned up by such and such date. And then we'd go out and kind of look, see if it got cleaned up, but if it didn't, we'd have to keep going down the process.
But that whole strategy has to start with a code compliance complaint. It's complaint driven, it can't be.
Well, we, if we see it, I mean, well, I, I make complaints. I mean, staff make complaints and so, if our staff are out there and they see something, then they will go ahead and, you know, make note of it.
And put it in their workload.
And put it in there. But if it's on private property, you know, we, we punt it to code compliance.
Yeah, um, I don't know, I like the camera idea and a couple strategic locations if we can budget in and make it work. But I think for me, like you're saying, it ebbs and flows and comes and goes and depending on who's arrested and that type of thing. So, for me, if we're gonna spend money or look at something, I know a few years back, I wanna say Jeremy Leonard, DAC, I can't remember who it was exactly, and I know one was part of the highway and cleaned up and then Jeremy sponsored, but I think there was actually, I think I missed this cleanup day up here. There was one up there. Right, I, I think, I think our money is better spent doing that and picking strategic areas, whether it's gateway park or triomphe park or whatever, or a stretch of highway to beautify and clean up. That's where my direction would go to is, and I think the community really liked that type of thing, seeing everybody out. For me, that's where my direction would go. And I'm not saying I don't think a few cameras would be a good idea in a couple strategic places. But, let's see if we can budget that in, but I think my direction would be, I'm not, I mean, you're gonna have graffiti. So, let's organize something to clean up parts of our town.
Just to, some of you have seen this, maybe some of you not, but like in Modesto, they started years ago, the whole love Modesto. The churches, yeah, the churches kind of started it in Modesto. Now it's a huge project where they're covering the entire city. Basically with several hundred volunteers, you know, on any specific day or whatever to go out and do just different projects or some of it's cleanup, some of it's building this person a fence, you know, that, that can't do it themselves and can't afford it, that, that type of stuff. But maybe engaging the church to see if they, someone might be willing to take a lead on something like that, I think it would be. Right, then it'd be cool to see the signs out that said, you know, love angels camp signs, you know, throughout the city, I think would be great.
And I want to say there was even like, if you had trash service, you could get a dumpster once a year or something.
That was part of the Clean Calway.
Yeah, well, nevermind, that's gone.
They did all the dumpsters for the cleanup. I think that's the effort that we need.
I'm wondering too if there's any way that we can obviously partner with the high school and in, when the effort of their partnership is paying for their. My gosh, what is it? Homecoming, all of that.
So that's where I'm kind of thinking like there needs to be like a community engagement. Cause I don't think it's gonna be one group, I think it's gonna be, you know, some collective that is gonna, you know. And, and I think we just like on a quarterly date, whatever, and clean up. Kind of the time of the year.
I have two questions. I have a question and a comment. So in your opinion, I, I don't know CBS behind or behind the theater. Is it better to have it lit or dark? I mean, I always hear pros and cons.
Lit, I, my, my residents, at night, I got cameras up, I mean, cameras and lights all the way around. And I noticed still, and I think back in the day, like your lights were off if you were home and they were on if you weren't home or something like that, and the more lights, the better. Bad guys don't wanna go underneath the light and commit crime. They only go in the dark and the bushes.
Is it possible to do something like talk with the owner of the theater building or CBS and, and have lights installed?
The only problem with some of those places is that you're affected because of the locations, you're affected residential.
Dark skies, yeah.
The light even about the theater tagging is because I know the person looks right, you know, right behind it. So if you light it up like a daylight bathroom, it'd be, yeah.
Motion lights maybe? You know, something like a motion light, but just pick the light that we have now at City Hall that's white.
You know, and then just as a, a comment. I think cameras are very effective for honest people. You know, I found on the high school campus that, you know, we planted all those cameras and pretty soon these guys had hoodies on and, I mean, you, unless you knew, I mean, you guys might have barely recognized the body style, but it may, I mean, they'd look right at it and their faces would be all black. I mean, so, I, I think cameras are a good deterrent. But I, I don't know if they're the end all be all, you know, I'd much rather see us with motion lights or something that would trigger, oh my god, something's happening.
Well, COVID caused us some damage in the law enforcement world for sure. Because now everybody's got an excuse to wear a mask everywhere they go.
But I do think on, on the, on the private property ones with the courtesy notice and the public nuisance graffiti, just offering suggestions of, you know, adding motion lights, you know, kind of deterrent, you know, information so that, that like clean it up, but you also might not think of, of things that would prevent you from getting tagged again.
Sure. Sir, Rosie, I, I like the idea of organizing citywide cleanups and let's beautify and especially with the new park, et cetera. Is our JPA gonna be okay with that? I mean, do you have to sign a waiver?
We normally don't. We do volunteer, yeah, we have volunteers. We haven't put anything like that together. I believe you said that Jeremy was the one that was doing the highway cleanup. It's been like DAC. It was off the highway for him and he.
That was up the high, that was on highway up highway four.
Started all the way up at Howard Works.
I was on the one from Ball, for Ball.
Yeah, maybe that's, I don't remember.
Going on the same day because then people were working.
He was the leader. They divided it up into different sections with different team leaders.
So it was all across.
Cause Forrest Scott was like up there.
Yeah, that's right.
I think Eads was right here at the park. Jeremy was on this side and then somebody was over there.
And then like, I don't know, I'm just, I just do act, but I mean, they just have business associations going through downtown. I don't know.
I think it's a partnership.
Right, I think there's a partnership that can happen with, you know, with whoever wants to, I'm just saying, I think it's partnership.
But if we could supply the paint, if we could supply the funding for that thing, you know. They need to have safety socks. Gripper thingies, like all that needs to be purchased, that needs to be.
It was part of a program. Highway four cleanup crew had a lot of that stuff and they're the ones who staged right here at this park. Um, are there any walls that will be available if we wanted to do graffiti while at the park? Just in, I'm not saying that we need to put up a wall. Is a wall.
Possibly. And so, and it might just want, be something to think about because at least it keeps them focused, but, but again, you also have to have rules about what type of graffiti you put on there.
Well, the vulgar. Well, I'm just saying if you know something, like if you're able to do something and don't get in trouble for it, then what's the fun in that too, right?
Well, that's where they can express their art.
So are you looking for, you're looking for like a number? I'm just looking for direction because I'm not intending for this to be approved tonight. This was more of a suggestion and direction and you guys tell me what you want me to bring back to you because we have to bring more, you know, authority for us to start engaging with various community, who's gonna, you know, like whatever you guys want. These were just suggestions on what we could offer.
I think having a conversation with someone like the high school and the business association if they would be interested.
Um, I also will talk to Morgan Gashi, she reached out to me because their county volunteers are also.
Yeah, I think a collaboration with, with a different associations and trying to just schedule this cleanup date would be ideal. And then in the meantime, you know, we need to start notifying private or, or right of way.
Is there an Angels Rotary anymore? No, it's part of the Angels. I mean, they might be interested in helping as well.
Yeah, that's kind of what I think. And then, yeah, anything to do with the high school too.
And motion, I mean, I think lights too could help.
I do.
Motion lights would have to be helpful, yeah. I, I think there needs to be a budget though for paint supply.
So something at budget time, if you want to get.
And then, you know, things that we'll need for cleanup days and make sure we're budgeted for that and I, I'm, I'm not sure how, I'm not in the camera realm either, anything like that, investing in that yet, but.
Weird question. If we get motion lights or cameras, you can't just hang those up a private person's building without. I mean, there's a whole step and process there too. So I mean, I, I don't know, that's a whole other ball of wax.
The outreach program about that.
You could have you thought about. Motion detectors.
At the very least, motion detectors, yeah.
Do we, you have any public comment? How we doing? Yeah, sorry, wait, give me ten.
It's weird cheating to be my age.
Who's old? Really?
Well, one thing, volunteers to do it. There's a volunteer Calaveras site. Nothing on there about needing help with the city. That's a great place. I go to it to look for new places to volunteer when I've done some things or I need something to do. And I go and I look and I, they give description of what they want. You know, and it doesn't have to be set dates or whatever, you know, maybe go and register is what the site would tell you to do. Where to go register, what would be needed, and you'd be surprised how many people come out. I may be old, but I am a den and I know how to do things. This county is full of things. There is such a resource, the elder community of brains and brawn and old school knowledge, so I think that's something to tap into.
Perfect, thank you.
And then also, okay, I used to get tickets and have to go to court. Sometimes a few in a row. A judge who was waiting kind of looked at me one time and he goes, Tricia, you can't afford this fine. I said, so, immunity service. So why not put, they gave, they give you, I did, at least back then, it was in the heyday, one of the stupid things. They gave you heat of different places to look and reach out for to fulfill your community service hours. Beyond that, also, there's a lot of people that end up in the situation and you can't afford the fine. And I don't know if they still do it, but community service, you know, and you get so many hours and so much time to fulfill it. And then, no fine to pay and you've done what you had to do. So that was just another suggestion that I had.
Thank you very much. All right, so.
So, you guys, I, I have a quarterly meeting with the courts and the judges and the SO and everything. And I'll ask that question if they're giving any sort of community service anymore. The problem with, why I'm not sure that they do is because once again staffing, because now you've got to take a usually a correctional deputy and they'll take on a Saturday or whatever, several people that have been, you know, issued community service and now they've gotta pay a deputy to go out and take these people out and do the work. I don't know if that's the case or not.
It used to be we could sign off on probation. You know, like the organization.
For the court, I had, I had a paper and I had to have every hour signed off and then I had to have it turned in. But every place I went had to be signed off by someone in the organization and what I did in the hours.
And was it a list of people that were approved by the court to?
It just had to be community service. I couldn't go to a friend and say, sign my sheet. It had to be that they could verify that that, that organization had.
Yeah, I remember back in the day, they, I just haven't heard of it in a long time. If it's something that they want to start back up, just like the diversion program in probation, we don't have that anymore. And since we're on that topic real quick, there was, once again, I was in a meeting last Friday. There was a conversation about some new programs coming into the junior high and high school involving probation, involving the school resource officers and involving the crisis center and, and some other groups to help identify troubled youth before they get into high school. That will include our school resource officer, but part of that, we did breach the topic of diversion programs. Uh, there was some funding that probation got as what, as how this is even starting. But there's like two probation officers, there are at least one that will be assigned as part of the schools in all of Calaveras County. So, I will keep on top of that. They're supposed to let me know when they decide to have a meeting because I let them know that I wanted my school resource officer involved as much as possible with that, so just so you're aware, there's that going on as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, great ideas. Rebecca, you got any, you got pretty good direction, any, any questions?
Nope, I think we're good. We'll work on kind of putting a general framework together and some initial outreach and then we'll bring it back for adoption.
Perfect.
It'd be nice to at least get some, something going before the end of the fiscal year, just so we can clean up with Shirley out there.
Perfect, love it, thank you. Okay, moving on to item F. This is to consider approval of resolution twenty-four dash two-six, potentially changing the start time for our city council meetings from six to five P M.
Um, at our last meeting, it was discussed that maybe we would entertain starting the meeting a little earlier. And then if we were, and earlier, I mean, like I put five o'clock, some of you said five thirty. It's really up to you, but it has to be direction from all of you in order to change the start time. Um, it was also discussed at that time that if we were to have closed session, that we can have it after the meeting instead of before the meeting, depending on what's going on with the agenda for that date. So, I'm bringing this item before you so you can talk amongst yourselves and give direction as to what you would like to do.
You want to go first?
Yes.
I don't know, I thought about it quite a bit. For me, with my schedule, this time almost works better. And I don't, uh, six o'clock is, is good. The five o'clock closed session, um, five to six, that gives us time to get most of our closed session out of the way with. I, I don't know, I think we keep it as is. Is it just, yeah, I don't know. I, I've got, that's just my vote. I think we keep words out of form.
Understood.
Just that, that works better with my.
It doesn't mean we have to change it. It's just that there was a topic of discussion, so this was the proper way to go about.
One of my thoughts was, we had a couple of meetings in a row where we didn't have closed session. Um, and in those instances, would it be okay to go ahead and start, and agendize and start at?
Correct.
You can't, you can't. That was my thought.
So we can start at five and then just have closed session at the end of it?
Correct, correct.
I don't think it's going to make.
Time for closed session, that bothers me a lot to just have an open ended tech because I, this group can ask a lot of questions, so.
And I don't think it's going to shorten our meeting.
I don't either.
Lengths, we would just, we would have started at five and we'd be done at seven and then we'd, we'd, we'd still, it's not going to shorten the meeting.
Yeah, I wish it was more public to respond to this because I, I see on Facebook now that this means anything, but people have a hard enough time logging in on, at six when they're coming in from work or getting kids from sports and things like that.
They're not logging in at seven already.
Right, but they're not here to say anything, so then I don't, you know, but my personal preference would be to keep it at six personally, just for scheduling and things like that.
Okay. And I'm good either way. I'm good changing it to five and getting home earlier potentially if that ever happened, but I'm good either way, so I'm, I'm, I'm quiet. Isabel?
I would like start at five. But that's just good, and I could start at four thirty if I needed to, but that's just me.
Would we have the session at four?
And we even try to get four thirty with closed session if we have.
I've always wondered.
How our makes that thing of a difference, and then if we needed to, we can go back in.
It's just ge- setting the general start.
No, again, and I mean, there's a lot of, of public comments and public attendance at the board of supervisors, smack dab in the middle of the day. And I've always wondered if our evening meetings like prohibit us because people want to get off work and they get to their families and their sporting events and all that stuff, but we've had that, Utica, um, park meeting in the middle of the day and we've had a lot of grievances on that, that people said, I can't attend at twelve, I can't attend, you know, I have a job, I have a job, so I don't know, it's, I think you complete some of the people some of the time.
Same thing with, like, we met at eight o'clock, eight to nine.
Did you have people?
We had Veronica, the one, you know, we've only had two or three meetings. A great public outreach, so I don't know if that'll make the difference, but and I'm just, I'm throwing out what, what Isabel's talking about, I, there is no way I can do a four thirty start when we already have at eight o'clock meetings, I have four thirty and I'm juggling it already, um, for me to try and get off it, that's pretty rough.
Um, with the board of supervisors, I, I don't know if you were following along, but at one point, the board was getting a lot of, uh, complaints from the public that they need to have nighttime meetings.
Oh.
And, um, and so there was a whole debate about changing from.
Six hour, nine hour.
Yeah. Or fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they would, so they went back and forth and what they decided is they would keep their meetings, um, two, two meetings a month at the nine, nine o'clock one, because are they still meeting every other? Yes, okay. But of the months where there was that fifth week, they would have a nighttime meeting. And so that, that extra meeting, they, they tried the nighttime meeting. No. So the, you know, the debate was, they thought, you know, they're missing all these public, which they're very heavily attended, um, but they thought more people would even be attending if it was nighttime. And really very few people show up at their nighttime meetings. So those are kind of just the extra meetings, um, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either. I, I don't think we're gonna. I think that the items, the agendized items will be what attract the public if there's a contentious item. Mike, you're up.
Because I don't think, I, I don't have any vested interest in what time we start. Uh, in all honesty, I want to be respectful of my fellow council members. My time is a little bit more flexible. But I, you know, I, I do appreciate the comments, but I really don't have a comment. Mark it down.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for bringing it. So we could talk about it. And then. I'm just, I'm just curious, because our scheduled meeting has to be the same time. To, to be mindful of other people's schedules, um, and it would curtail the amount of discussion we have. Could we sometimes start closed session at five thirty? Would that be better for you if we started at five?
Sometimes we do, it depends on how much, like, if we only have one item, maybe it's a five thirty or how much time they think it's going to take. The closed session just depends.
Okay, because it's always been five since I've been.
There's been a few, yeah, it just depends.
Okay. I mean, because we could do that, be more respectful.
And Caroline, you're concerned that if we were to change it to five o'clock and start the regular agenda at five and then do closed session if and when we have closed session at the end, your concern would be that closed session would exceed an hour?
A hundred percent, five thirty and then do the closed session at five.
Yeah, just make it a half hour.
Yeah, make it a half hour and then we have to go back in, we go back in.
Yeah, because we could have wrapped up today's in a half hour.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Yeah, we, we do really well with time constraints, if I'm being honest, because I think our conversation today, we could have wrapped up in a half hour.
But we had an hour.
Yeah.
I would be fine with that, start, uh, with, um, the session at five and then start the meeting at five thirty, that would be, yeah. I mean, I don't love being here till nine or nine thirty, even though.
I mean, the five thirty is.
Is that doable for you, Ellen?
It's, it's doable, yeah, it just bumps up. It is ni- it is nice when it's at six o'clock, because then I, I know I have an extra hour. You know what I mean? It, it is nice, but we have closed session at least fifty percent of the time too, so.
We will be having a lot more coming up, well, we are for a while, we're getting.
And I think those discussions are definitely going to go way more than a half an hour. You know, for the next six months. So we'll be here at seven forty-three and still have two, another hour plus to go too, so. And I think, yeah, it's just, for me, the six o'clock works well with my job, so.
We can leave it, let's leave it. The majority is that we leave it.
I wonder if we should be mindful of staff too, though. I mean, yeah, you too.
My two feelings, uh, Chief Ellis is here and Michelle. About for you, for the, for legal to get here. Doesn't matter, okay.
I mean, not earlier is always good, but I mean, that's just my easier.
Does it save us any money to move it to five thirty, start from?
I'm on staff.
I'm, yeah, staff like with Amy.
Yes. Yeah, went a little bit, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would be fine with a half hour move, um, the hour move, like, I literally was working until five forty-five and then ran down the hill to get here. Because I am working until generally five. But, um, yeah, but five, five thirty, the five and then the five thirty is okay. If we want to try it.
I was gonna say, should we do it on a trial period?
Period, see how it works.
All right, I'll make a motion to leave it as is. I will make a motion to have a meeting at six o'clock with a five P M, or actually, this is six o'clock, sorry.
Yeah, six o'clock start, that's it.
Do you have to make a motion and leave it as it is?
I don't know, I'm throwing it out there. And then do they go or fail?
I'll second that.
Shamenti? Brolio? Moncada? Hernan? Sharato? Thank you. Um, okay, so, uh, whoever says, you know, being a squeaky wheel is about fame, it's not. I am. So several months ago, I was, uh, attending a virtual, uh, district ten Caltrans probation meeting and at one section, they talked about, um, are there any safety issues? And so I brought up the crosswalks downtown, I brought up the fact that the paint is worn off, it's not reflective anymore, it's not safe, blah, blah, blah. So I don't know if anyone has noticed, but all through town, they're all painted.
The crosswalks?
The crosswalks.
We're there doing this morning.
And they're still doing it and they're going all through town, all in Caltrans right of way and repainting everything. So we just had our meeting today and I said, I just want to thank you, you know, for uh, painting these and I wasn't sure if it was because I complained about it and they said, well, you were the one that complained about it and it caused a investigation, uh, into maintenance, so, yeah. So that, uh, is done, so I'm very excited about that. I told them thank you very much, uh, for getting on that. Um, the outreach meeting on the seventh went, uh, really well. We had, you know, still some, some grumblings, but for the most part, people, you know, walked in, had some very, you know, pointed questions that they wanted, uh, answered. Uh, they went and talked to Caltrans, they got them answered, they walked out, grabbed a cookie with a smile on their face and, and left.
So I thought, I liked how open Caltrans was to some of the suggestions and was going back to see how many could incorporate some of those. I was really appreciative of.
Yeah. So, um, so there, we're going to continue to work together to try to get more information out there, additional outreach if needed. Um, and then obviously, we're still planning on that, uh, roundabout, um, simulation out at the fairgrounds later this fall. I had an interview with B J Hanson over in Sonora. Um, they wanted to say whoever was in charge of updating the sound, thank you, it's a mean. So they were very, very happy. Now, I made the recommendation, you put it together, so thank you and Sam. We restructured our office space, uh, for building, planning and the local plan, so if we come in, it, it, it's really nice. So, um, good job to Rose and Michelle on, on pulling that together. Um, and then Michelle's going to be focusing on budget items at the next several meetings, um, to, to kind of get, get it, so we're not having one big giant, long, 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 long budgetary discussion meeting, but to kind of break it up into pieces, um, so we can have more productive conversations about that. Um, and then I am off next week to try to get probably the last of scheme in before the end of the season. Um, so Michelle will be covering the subcommittee meetings.
Monday morning.
Monday morning.
Thank you. Um, council reports, we will start with Caroline.
Uh, attended COG, uh, on March sixth and let's see, there was, um, a verbal report from Caltrans, an update, which was great. They talked about the Valley Springs School Project, which would be completed in the summer. And the roadside safety project was getting, it's starting, I think, March eighteenth is what I have here, so. Yeah, and then, uh, we approved the draft overall work program and planning program and monitoring expenditure plan. Uh, the two things highlighted there are the completed greenhouse gas, um, project and then the, the, um, emergency evacuation and preparedness plan. Anything else?
No, it cost her up a little bit, but that had to do with, I mean, increases in insurance and different things and some staffing. Everything was pretty normal on that.
And then, um, however, connect, they were doing, um, a shuttle service Irish Day. And.
Saturday hopper.
Oh, yeah, the Saturday hopper. They just hired a new driver, which was good news, um, and onboarded, so.
Yeah, the only other thing is the, um, just while we're on it, um, is they, we re-upped, uh, the leases for a couple of years because, and they, and, uh, we didn't go the full five years, but I think two and three. Because we're trying to build that new facility, um, for the next couple of years, so we didn't extend ourselves and the, the gentleman was very nice and kind of agreed.
And no, no increases in rents?
No. No, no, I mean, nothing, just, yeah, so.
Just extended them. We're for time that you saw that.
Okay, Isabel?
Um, I attended Lockville last night and we, um, only have one item on the agenda, which was the approval of the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. That was my report.
And what is that budget? I'm going to have to put you on the spot, I mean, is it?
It's one hundred thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-four cents.
And those dollars come from both the county and the city?
One third.
The county, the city and then all the.
The special districts.
And the budget actually was an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars for, um, John Vinua is retiring, so he's staying onboard for one more year with us. And there's an additional twenty-five thousand that's embedded in the budget for a succession plan for training and stuff for a six seater. But that was coming out of a reserve account right now. So it was basically a status quo, it, it was an increase of fifty-four dollars, this year's budget from last year. Yeah, that was it, the only. There's a couple of projects coming up. One is the U P U D, there's an annexation in progress. Uh, A U P U D and then the City of Angels Sphere of Influence and the N S R is ongoing right now or starting.
We're still working through all of the meetings.
And it gives a reminder of April first, so that seven, seven hundred forms are due.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a few minds.
Yes, Rose.
Rose, I didn't, I don't think I put on mine to send it to COG as well, I supposed to send it, do COG.
I'll, I'll follow up this week, do it with you guys.
I just sent mine.
Thank you, Rose.
That's what I did.
Will you resend it?
Okay.
Just go in your Outlook, it's about seven hundred form, and that, the email.
Oh, I can do that, I can search it. All right, I'll search, never mind, I'll search it. I'll be a big boy and search it.
Did you have any other, uh, updates other than COG?
No, COG and.
I, um, I was gonna attend the all hazards, but it was staff only, which was okay. Thank you very much for telling me that. Um, I want to thank Rose and Michelle for staff appreciation. I popped in that day and I think everyone really appreciated that, thank you. And I was going to ask Jennifer to write a thank you to Wes, uh, at Caltrans because I also knocked on their door and asked them to do that, but I'm glad we got it done. It's safer.
Yeah, it's funny because I said something at the, um, meeting that was at the school about downtown also and the crosswalks and my son has to cross at night, um, leaving the theater to come home and how dangerous it was. So I think they got.
Well, the, it, it wasn't all done at one time and so we were walking the dogs and I noticed that one of the lines was painted and I thought, oh my gosh, did Public Works come out here and keep them? And because it was just one that was done, and then, um, and then later, or the next day, we were walking and I noticed there was like three more painted and I'm like, no. Coming out in the middle of the night painting all these.
It was, it was interesting. We have A, B and K option. And all those took a lot of approval and stuff and I said, you know, just paint them, that'd be a good first step.
Okay, uh, Rose, do we have a calendar?
I do have a calendar, so the infrastructure on Monday, uh, U W P A on Tuesday, then the finance budget policy on Thursday to end March. Um, and then April starts, uh, Tuesday, the second with council meeting and then COG on the third.
So I will be gone the week, the first week in April, I will not be attending the council meeting and I will not be here for COG, I will be on vacation.
I think there is a U W P A budget meeting on the eighteenth.
I have it here.
It's, it was an email that I saw, I'm, you're on.
On the twenty-first.
Budget, gotcha, okay, sorry. All right. Anything else for a calendar?
Do you, who's alternate for COG?
For COG.
Is it me? Let me throw that in there and go on then.
So I'll be on vacation, I won't be planning on calling in.
That was the?
Yeah.
Third, right?
Yeah, the third.
Sorry, Alvin.
You're all right, you're all good.
Because it's going to happen in May again.
Okay, correspondence?
Is the letter that I spoke about earlier, uh, a letter of support for the rural public health, uh, For the rural public health, um, potential building for financial...
Okay. Um, future agenda items?
I just have one, I, um, had a, and I don't know, Jennifer, you can help with this. Had someone ask about doing something down Gardner Lane, because it feels like people are speeding, and when, you know, when kids are present, um, it could create a hazard. You know, driving down that street, and I talked with Scott, I mean, I think there's a lot we could do, but I don't know how we go about maybe just, you know, kids present, or whatever that sign would say to post under our speed limit sign, just to make people aware. I mean, now, when you drive down in the middle of the day, there's no one there, but on weekends and holidays and not school, and maybe just to warn folks. But I'm sure every street probably, probably needs those too, I would imagine, but, um, it was just something to be mindful of. It feels like people do drive way too quickly down Gardner.
Hey, I live it, I can tell you, it's... They, they shoot the gap from Murphy's Grade to try to get to Dogtown to get out. They don't want to go through the school, they try to, and they go fast.
Yeah.
And I mean, you hear them coming, and it's, and I know I've clocked so many years of trying to talk to, and... That apparently, they used to years ago have speed bumps or some sort of speed humps, and those were removed for liability reasons. And I know that there's always a perception that you're standing in your yard, or you're walking your dog, you're standing still, so any car going by you feels like they're speeding, and they're not, but boy, howdy, there's cars that are going fast, so... Chief, you got something to say?
I wouldn't mind making a recommendation, just for future knowledge too, like, what would it, what does it cost these days to put speed bumps in? Uh, because that, honestly, Gardner Lane is a perfect, would be like the perfect place for those... They don't go everywhere, they don't belong everywhere, but Gardner Lane, because it's a straightaway, because it's in the center of two main roadways, you know, the people are going from Murphy's Grade to Dogtown, or from Dogtown to Murphy's Grade, and shoot across Gardner. Um, I don't know what the cost is. It used to be around $10,000, but I don't, that was years ago.
So, we can look into that, um, I can talk to our engineer, and, um, we can also look at Dwight exactly they were taken out from a liability for that.
That's what, that's what Ed's told me.
I don't remember.
Like, my first refund council four years ago.
I don't recall that, but, um, anyway, so I'll talk to engineering, we'll kind of do some research.
Four years ago, so how would she recall that? That's what I was told from the city administrator at that time, but that's only what I was told, thank you for that.
I was told there's something called, um, speed table to that.
That's what, everything's a speed table. I work with speed table projects, and I do have some literature and information on that. There's either speed humps, speed tables, but no more speed bumps.
No more dots.
Unless they're in...
No more dots?
No.
Also, it's gonna check in with the fire department because of the engines, making sure that, um, there's some stuff with those. Right? I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's great. Any other future agenda?
I have an idea about it, because all the community members from community members in that area...
Oh, they're not gonna... Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sure.
No, they're gonna love it.
You want to have a...
They love it.
Well, I, and I do think there's merit in that time that the mobility project opens, and the whole, and the circulation happens, that there is the potential that more people will use that, which we have brought up to Caltrans, so I'll look into that. And I just don't recall seeing any, like, resolution, any paperwork, anything in terms of removal of those, or any correspondence with insurance or anything, so we'll, we'll look at it on our side, yeah. Um, and then in terms of my sec, um, I'm going to bring, uh, and Chris, so then we'll do the, kind of talking to a presentation on it, the AMR, so that's the, um, automated meter reading project. So, um, we got the updated quotes for the software and training and all that good stuff, and it's fully within my purchasing authority, but I just want to make sure you guys see it, and we can kind of use this as an outreach opportunity.
So, we'll be able to...
I don't know, bad outs.
No, we should be able to install some then?
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll kind of do a pilot, pilot project. Kind of on that note, um, I still haven't heard back from the Water Smart Grant that I did, but there's another round, so I'm gonna bring, um, two requests for application for two grants. One is another Water Smart Grant, um, for some additional AMR projects, and the other one is a drought resiliency project, but I believe that that one may be able to fund part of the water treatment plant improvement project. Not the whole thing, but elements of it. So, um, I'm gonna probably bring that one. And then, when I was at the, um, Caltrans, uh, open house, the nice part is, uh, Caltrans brings lots of staff, and, uh, you get to talking. And there is a, um, notice of funding opportunity opening up for striping projects. So, um, that's coming in May, and so I'll get, um, again, either, I don't know which meeting in April, but, uh, request approval for applying for that as well.
Good.
Thanks.
Yeah, they give you all sorts of like little... Okay, we're looking for a German.
I have one more.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You're, I, um, whenever it comes about, because there's still time, but the abandoned vehicle in Measure A. I would love to be schooled on those, I mean, they just, and there's gonna be some, so it doesn't have to be this next meeting or...
Yeah.
Whenever is your opinion, but that'll be coming up at some point.
Michelle was going to incorporate that in part of a budget conversation on the Measure A. The abandoned vehicle, um, I included that in your correspondence, it did not pass.
It did not, that's right, no, it didn't pass, but what is that?
So, I have a meeting, um, this week, uh, with the, for abandoned vehicle abatement. I'll let you tomorrow, my thing is on stage. Um, and I'm, we're gonna talk about it, what the strategies are. It will go on the November ballot, but there seems to be a better way of getting the information out there that needs to...
Better outreach to try to...
Yeah, I just don't think people knew what it was.
I think it was, yeah, they thought it was a new, new thing and a new maybe challenge.
So, we'll talk about that this week. Um, for right now, there's sufficient money in the fund balance, and that's...
What did you, is it on your table?
Yeah, the look.
Uh, tag, focus.
No, no.
No?
It's standing up here, central gentleman.
Oh, yeah, right there.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Oh, AV or AB?
So, Thursday.
Yes, yeah.